Called a regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, July 20th, 2015 to order. I'd all ask that Joe Pries' rights for refund location be filed by Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the City Council meets in regular session, we just ask for guidance and direction and understanding as we enact the various affairs of business before us. We are ever mindful that our city is constantly faced with challenges, as we were this afternoon when we had a car strike and electrical pull on the southwest side and darkened much of that particular neighborhood for some time. And we just ask that our city crews are all involved, the fire, police, and public works, that they are guided with blessings and everything comes out in safe and sound order. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that those and all those from around our country who are serving with them are blessed with guidance and direction as they go about their noble cause. Tonight, as always, we ask for direction at each and every member of the City Council, knowing that each and every one of us is here to do what is in our hearts and minds is in the very best interest of the community of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Callahan, so Alderman O'Brien, would you lead us the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rusado.
Here.
ATAC.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chanzet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Alderman Callahan is absent. Homan.
Here.
Bottermann.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
The record reflect that twelve of the fourteen, or thirteen of the, twelve of the thirteen elected members of the City Council are present in the council for this evening's meetings, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman McFadden, do you have anything?
I do not.
Anybody else? Okay, moving then to item number five, which is the consent agenda. Alderman McFadden is Vice Chairman of Government Services. Would you present this, please?
Certainly. Consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file: A) The June 2015 building report; B) The planned commission minutes for June 17th, 2015; Historic preservation commission minutes from June 22nd, 2015; D) April and May 2015 financial reports; E) 2014 comprehensive annual financial report and board communication. And the approvals are: F) July 17th payroll in the amount of $765,039.34; G) The accounts payable check register in the amount of $3,640,529.46; H) City Council minutes from June 1st, 2015; I) Approval and release of closed public utilities minutes for: September 17th, 2007; January 7th, 2008; March 4th, 2008; February 8th, 2010; April 12th, 2010; April 26th, 2010; October 9th, 2010; February 8th, 2011; April 19th, 2011; May 6th, 2011; May 15th, sorry, June 15th, 2011; And August 15th, 2011; J) Resolution 1576-R, accept deed for Brenton Court detention basin; K) Ordinance 1526, amendments for the text of the zoning code; L) Resolution 1580-R, incentive agreement with AGS Technology; M) Resolution 1584-R, accepting a plat and dedicating a portion of Carlisle Road; N) Resolution 1585-R, accepting a plat and dedicating a portion of Main Street; O) Resolution 1581-R, authorizing sale of municipally-owned real estate on Danforth Drive and Garfield Street; P) Resolution 1591-R, authorizing purchase of two 2016 Ford trucks from Bob Riddings Ford for $70,738; Q) Resolution 1586-R, approving First Amendment to master services agreement with multiple consultants; R) 1587-R, approving Second Amendment to master service agreement with G4S Technology LLC; S) Resolution 1589-R, authorizing purchase of a 2015 three-reel turret trailer for an amount not to exceed $52,321; T) Revising the Class B liquor license; Ordinance 1527, revising the Class B liquor licenses; U) Approval of Class G liquor license for Pal Joey's Peapod Half Marathon; V) Approval of a Class B III liquor license for Walgreens; And W) Approval of a Class D I license for TGI Fridays. Move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McFadden, second by Alderman Serone, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Alderman Brown.
I gotta commend you for converting all those dates into months.
I missed one, didn't I?
There is one that you missed so far there. I just wanted to correct it. On the 6, 6/11, you said May?
Yeah, June.
And it's June.
Got it.
Very good, though. I'm impressed.
Any other discussion? Clerk call the roll on the consent agenda.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rusado.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Bottermann.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, twelve vs., no nos, and one vacancy. Okay, moving to item number six, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Does anybody this evening want to address the City Council? Mr. Tracy? Would you give us your name and address for the clerk, please, for the record?
Sheriff Lee Tracy, 1356 Clyburn Street in Batavia. And I just wanted to report on behalf of the Batavia Arts Council and thank the city of Batavia for their participation in the cemetery walk on June 14th at the West Side Cemetery. In spite of what could have been a disastrous occasion, given the weather, we had a fairly successful activity. I just want to report, too, that the Batavia Arts Council has awarded grants this year to Water Street Studios, the Albright Theater Company, and Acapella Go. And we intend also to award individual grants and scholarships in the fall. I would encourage you to attend events. There is a polo tournament, which was to be last Sunday, but is rescheduled to August 2nd. And we have a variety of activities coming up, and I would direct you to bataviaartscouncil.org for our activities. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you give us your name and address for the clerk, please?
Name is James Gorski, live at 717 Belane Street. Unfortunately, maybe fortunately to some of you, I won't be able to stay here the whole night. But I'd just like to say that $2.7 million would go a long way to help fix the sewer system in this city. Two point seven, actually just over $2.7 million. So my guidance would be to think about a different part of the city when your voting happens today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council? Okay, moving to item number...
If I could, I'm not just gonna let that one go by. The $2.7 million that we're gonna spend downtown on Houston Street project could not be spent on sewer repairs in the city. It is TIFF money from the TIFF district, which is located downtown. And I think people need to understand that there are different pots of money that we have to spend in the city, and we can't just take money from one place and use it somewhere else. We would love to be able to spend money on separation of sewers so we could fix some of these problems. We don't have that money. The money that we're using from the TIFF is, has to be spent in, within the TIFF or in adjacent TIFF. So that money is coming out of that pot of money. So you have to understand that. That's all I have to say.
Okay. All right, moving then to item number seven, Main Street Minutes.
Good evening. My name is Kathy McNally. I'm the new Assistant Director at Main Street, and it's my pleasure to bring you the Main Street Minute tonight. Seventy-three Main Street volunteers donated 185 hours for planning, meetings, programs, and events last month. As part, on ongoing retention meetings, Main Street met with Peterson Design, Batavia Animal Clinic, Autosport, Salvage Heart Vintage Wares, Acosta Consignment, and Bulldog Sellers last month to learn about them and how we can help them grow. Now I'd like to share with you some of our successes. In June, Batavia Main Street received three Lieutenant Governor's Awards for Excellence in Downtown Revitalization at the Illinois Main Street and Historic Preservation Conference in Carbondale. Our Bicycle Friendly Business Program, won for academic restructuring. Our annual fundraiser evening event, Cocktails in the Park, won for organization. And our annual banner program that incorporates a design competition, partnering with the Batavia High School Art Department, won for Best Design. We also have one other, Jamie wrote this tonight for me to read. She didn't write this on here, but I wanted to share this with you anyway. I'd also like to tell you that our very own Jamie Sam was named the Illinois Main Street Volunteer of the Year. So she was, she was a little shy about that, but I wanted you all to know about that. Our weekly farmer's market has continued to attract crowds upward of 2,500 people each Saturday morning from 8:00 to noon. Gutanos and hazelnuts are joining us weekly with amazing cooking demonstrations. The Batavia United Way Kids' Tent has been a welcome and popular addition to the market as well. Make sure to come down this Saturday to enjoy sweet corn, fruit, bread, veggie, cheese, and more. And don't forget, every third Saturday, the Artisan Collective will join the market to bring even more retail into our downtown. Looking ahead, tickets are now on sale for Cocktails in the Park, which will be held this Saturday, July 27th, at 7:00 PM. Head out to Appleton Park on the River Walk behind City Hall and enjoy an evening of live music, small bites, drinks, and fun. Returning this year is the cigar and whiskey tasting deck with the addition of the champagne and dessert tasting. Attire is casual and proceeds go towards downtown Batavia revitalization efforts. Win a tent full of prizes or an adventure to one of our other favorite downtown communities. Tickets are $25 per order and $30 the day of. Limited picnic tables can be reserved for an additional $100 and includes a bottle of wine or six beers. LaVita Cigar and Whiskey Tasting Deck and Galena Wine and Party Kitchen Dessert Deck tickets are reservation-only and an additional $40 per person. Green Fair on the Fox is Batavia's premier event for you to come explore all the eco-markplace has to offer. Celebrate and learn about your sustainable community. Come rain or shine down to the River Walk on Saturday, August 8th, from 9:00 to 3:00. Make sure to check out the unique vehicles at the Alternative Transportation Show or bring your tricked-out bike down for the Bike Commission's Bike Show. For art that appeals to all of your senses, join us on August 16th, I'm sorry, August 14th through 16th for Art in Your Eye Fine Art Show and Festival. Batavia Fine Artist Ezra Segal is our featured poster artist. And I brought the poster here in case everyone hasn't seen it yet. And the poster is for sale in our Main Street office and will be available the weekend of the festival. Friday and Saturday night, Batavia welcomes amazing live music from some of Chicagoland's premier bands, the Hemispheres and Modern Day Romeo's, where you can come and enjoy with a cool beverage at the Penrose Beer Tent. Saturday and Sunday daytime, enjoy outdoor fine artwork booths, the local City Hall and student legacy exhibit, and print demonstrations from Water Street Studios Print Lab. Intense cuisine is back along with some great food trucks to delight your taste buds. Art in Your Eye is our largest event and takes an army of volunteers to produce. If you are interested in helping us out that week, head over to www.artinyoureye.com to pick a time slot. To find out more about what we do or want to get involved with the community, contact Batavia Main Street at (630) 761-3528, or visit www.downtownbatavia.com. And now I would like to introduce to you Sarah from Batavia Animal Clinic. Batavia Animal Clinic is under new ownership, and they are very excited to become involved in our community. I invited them here tonight just to introduce you to their new business. Sarah?
Welcome.
Hi. Thank you, Kathy, for such a kind introduction. My name is Sarah, and I'm from Batavia Animal Clinic. We are located at 139 First Street, behind Walgreens and Panera in the Batavia Plaza. I've worked at Batavia Animal Clinic for almost 15 years now, and I'm very proud to welcome Dr. Adam Shanding as our new owner and veterinarian. As the only veterinary clinic in Batavia, it's very exciting to have new leadership that believes in community involvement. Dr. Shanding was born and raised in Ohio and has been working in the veterinary field since he was in his teens. He earned his Doctorate of Veterinary Medicine from the University of Ohio in 2008. Dr. Shanding purchased Batavia Animal Clinic in January of this year and has already worked hard to get involved and become an active member of this community. We've been a sponsor and a participant in the Batavia Park District's Walk and Wag 3K9 and Windmill Fest Pet Parade. We were at the Batavia United Ways Kids booth at the farmer's market this past Saturday, and it was very hot. We will be a sponsor at the Batavia Main Street's Bat Fest also. We're very excited this Saturday, we're having an open house. It will be from 11:00 to 2:00, and we're having a ribbon-cutting ceremony at 11:00. I know you won't be there. We'd love to see all of you there, though. If you have any questions or would like any more information, you can always visit our website. It's bataviavet.com, super simple. You can call us anytime, (630) 879-8005. And of course, you can always find us on Facebook and give us a like. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, since we have him in the audience, who do they have, the good doctor? Maybe just stand up so everybody can see who he is.
I have one question I want to ask the Ohio State University.
We won't hold that against you.
Okay. He was in Ohio, that's all that matters.
Wow.
Thank you all.
Thank you. You know, certainly, I just want to pay a couple words of tribute to Dr. Shanding for picking up Batavia Animal Clinic, and it's great to have a new, vibrant, young veterinarian in town that wants to pick up and do some good things. So we wish you the very best and certainly look forward to your participation in the community for many, many years to come. So thank you for choosing Batavia, and we will look forward to working with you and seeing you around town as the days progress. So welcome to Batavia. Okay. The next thing we have is a recognition for former Alderman Jamie Sam. And Jamie, I'm gonna ask you if you could join me up at the podium for a moment. As is always the case, when somebody leaves the City Council, we try to do something to give you some remembrance of your good services to people of Batavia. And so I just want to make note that Jamie's tenure with us was short, but hopefully, maybe the day will come when you'll return to city government.
Still not anywhere right now. Still near Batavia.
I know you're not. But anyway, we're very pleased to lose you to such a good cause as Main Street, and you bring a lot of new creativity and energy and vigor and vitality to the whole thing. And so I think Batavia Main Street has gone from one good pair of hands with joy to another great pair of hands with you and Kathy. And so we really look for things of positive nature to come out of Main Street continuing in the future. So I have this plaque, and it's noted that now you're the statewide volunteer of the year. I mean, you've blown by Batavia at the local level, and now you've gone to the state level already. So we have a plaque which reads, "City of Batavia, Jamie Sam, in appreciation of two years of dedicated voluntary service to the citizens of Batavia as a member of the City Council, 2013 to 2015. Thank you for contributing to the quality of life in our community." Signed by myself as mayor. Thank you, dear.
Thanks. Well, I've commented before, since we kind of had a little goodbye a couple weeks ago. But obviously, as you can see, I haven't stopped being very busy. Main Street's got a lot going on. And like I said before, I hope you guys all continue being involved with us, and I'll try to keep you guys updated on everything that's going on. So thanks for letting me serve with you guys, and I'm excited to continue to serve in the community with you all. So thank you.
Okay, and obviously with Jamie leaving, the fourth ward had a big hole in vacancy in the fourth ward, and we put out the public call, and we were quite fortunate to have two, what I felt was two outstanding citizens step forward. And those of you who were here at the committee of the whole meeting last week, got to make the decision as to who was going to be chosen. And at the end of the night, Paula Mueller from 320 Delia Street was chosen as the new fourth ward alderman. So to do this legal via the instructions of the city attorney, I'm going to officially appoint Paula Mueller as the new fourth ward alderman, but to have that officially approved, I need a motion and a vote of confirmation from the City Council. So Alderman Stark, you want to make the motion?
I move that we, I'm not sure how to word this motion.
Move my appointment.
I move that we approve your appointment of Paula Mueller to the City Council.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman ATAC for the approval of Paula Mueller to be the new fourth ward alderman. Clerk call the roll.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Bottermann.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rusado.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
I'm pleased to announce that that motion was approved by a vote of 13 yes, no nos, and one currently vacant, that will be voting here very soon. But to kind of finish the task, I need to have Paula join me up here in the center of the room. If you want to bring your husband along, we will invite them to...
I need to get you up there by my desk. The TV folks just told me this.
Make sure that works.
See how that... Okay, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Paula Mueller.
I, Paula Mueller.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of fourth ward alderman.
To the office of fourth ward alderman.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of fourth ward alderman.
Of the office of fourth ward alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So let the record reflect that Paula Mueller has taken her seat as fourth ward alderman and is now part of the proceedings of this meeting. Let the minute so reflect that action. And so we will move then to item number 10, which is Resolution 15-72-R, Downtown Redevelopment Grant for 4 to 6 East Wilson Street. Who's got this one?
I've got it, Your Honor.
Alderman Brown.
Thank you. As you mentioned, this is for Resolution 15-72-R. This was brought to us by Chris Aiston at two community of the whole meetings on June 9th and on June 18th. We discussed it at that time, and there was some concern as to awarding this grant on the grounds that the property owner is not a tenant or is not a resident of Batavia. He actually lives and resides in California, but he does still own the property here in Batavia. There still was some concern as to whether or not, if this grant was granted, whether or not we would see some, some good come out of it, as the building has been vacant for so many years. So that was kind of batted around back and forth. So end result is the ordinance, I feel, is a very, very good, or the resolution is a very good resolution, as we've got some contingencies placed on the actual funding of the project. And the funding of the project would be up to 50% of the cost, and that would be to a maximum of $21,350. As always with any of these grants, all the paperwork would have to be turned in, staff would have to review it, building inspections would have to take place, everything would have to be done in accordance with all the applicable building codes. Some of the restrictions that were placed on it is a minimum of 100% of the Wilson Street level space, Wilson Street level floor space to be occupied by a use set forth as either permitted or conditional pursuant to Section 2.403 of the city zoning ordinance, or a minimum of 50% of the Wilson Street level floor space to be occupied by either a retail sales or eating and drinking establishment, or the ownership must, or not or, but the ownership must show proof of a fully executed lease with the business establishment as described above, and for a minimum period of 24 months. So in other words, we didn't want to see some money taken out of our TIFF funds that are designated for this use to be put into an improvement that may or may not bring a business into town. We were willing to go along with this resolution and the awarding of this grant if we saw that there was an actual tenant taking occupancy of this space. So with that, I move for approval of Resolution 15-72-R.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of Resolution 15-72-R, the Downtown Redevelopment Grant for 4 to 6 East Wilson Street. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say, I think doing an improvement to the building that isn't business-specific is always a better thing to do than one that is business-specific. Because as we've done in the past, we've had grants into a building for a business that was in there, and then two, three years later, that business moves on, and another business moves in, and we have another grant application in front of us for the next business. This is more, to me, building-specific, that it will stay with the building, like an electrical improvement or plumbing improvement.
Good point, Alan. I'm glad you brought that up, because I didn't even mention what the grant was for, and it's for improving the washrooms, making them ADA compliant. And we've been told by staff and the property owner that that is what has been stopping him from being able to actually get an occupant into this building. So it is something, as Alan said, it's gonna stay with the building and should make it more attractive, I guess you could say, for a business to move into.
Okay. Any other discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Rusado.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Bottermann.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
No.
Okay, Resolution 15-72-R is approved. Eleven yes, two...
Twelve yes.
Twelve yes, one no, and one absent. Okay. Moving to item number 11, which is Resolution 15-97-R, awarding demolition, earthwork, underground contract related to the Houston Street project to landmark contractors for an amount not to exceed $1,676,181.90. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is for the Houston Streetscape Project. This is the first of, I think there's five tonight that we have awarding bids. This would be for demolition, earthwork, underground, concrete, asphalt, electrical, landscaping, and irrigation are all the things that we're going to be going through. This one would be for the demolition and earthwork. The low bid was submitted by landmark contractors and V3, who is the construction manager, has verified all the references at this point. Everybody read Kerry's memos and we've discussed this a little bit. We split all these contracts up and it seems to have worked very well for pricing. So with that, I make the motion that we award the demolition, earthwork, underground contract related to the Houston Street Improvement Project to landmark contractors for the amount not to exceed $1,676,181.90. That's Resolution 15-97-R.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Brown for the approval of Resolution 15-97-R. Any discussion?
One comment.
Alderman Brown?
Your Honor, I just wanted to make mention, since there's still a hot issue of storm and sanitary separation and the confusion's still over where we can spend money and where we can't spend money. But in this project, because of the Trotter Study that was done, I believe, eight years ago, it was identified some of the northeast, northwest, I'm sorry, northwest area that has still got a combination sewer and water, or sewer and storm sewer up there. So because of that Trotter Study that was done many years ago and the $8 million price tag on it, it was the decision by the city council at that time that we didn't have $8 million, but as we did roadway improvements, we would move forward with that plan to separate that sanitary and stormwater system. So during this Houston Street project, that is what's going to be happening here. There's work that has to happen from downtown here going northwest and that's going to be accomplished on this Houston Street project.
Part of this was already done last year when we put in the storm sewer down Houston Street early on, so we've already got some of the enlargement already in place for it. Thank you for doing that. I was, you and I were thinking along the total same lines. I was about to make the same speech you just did. But I think that's important to note that this is a key element because this is the big end of the drainage system where the water's got to go. And we're now going to have that in place once we get all this improvement done on Houston Street. So we'll be able to receive a whole bunch of water specifically from the northwest side that can easier, more easily be removed from the neighborhoods and brought to the river with what we are doing here. So I think it's...
We still have a long way to go.
Got a long way to go.
It's going to be a multi-year project.
At least we got a pipe to put it in now. I mean, that's the nice thing. The other thing I just wanted to say, I was going to share this with the council, in that one, since last Thursday, we started on, since last Thursday, I've had four different folks either call me, contact me, meet me someplace or whatever have you, and ask questions about telling me that they're thinking about wanting to open up a business in downtown Batavia. And so I say, "Why is this?" And they say, "Well, they know somebody that's down here," or that they really like the kind of momentum and the direction that the city is heading. There's a lot of things starting to appear and happen that's of a very positive nature and they like the synergy that they're seeing here, so they're seriously considering wanting to come into Batavia and do some stuff. So we're getting some traction with this whole thing and there is getting to be some notice of what we are doing here and it seems to be at least getting people to start to think about Batavia as a place to open up a business. So I'm really looking upon that as a very positive trend. So enough for the speeches. Anybody else want to throw something on that?
One more comment, Alan. I don't know if you were going to, I don't want to still get thunder, but this project is coming in $300,000 under budgeted amount, so that's a very good thing and very surprising thing, I think, to staff and myself and I'm sure other people.
I think I give credit to the staff and to the construction manager for the way they split up these bids to try to make that happen.
Right. Okay, then we'd ask for a vote, roll call on Resolution 15-97-R.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Bottermann?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
So that was 13 yes, no-nos, 1 absent. Okay, moving to item 12, which is Resolution 15-98-R, awarding concrete contract related to Houston Street Improvement Project to Abbey Paving and Seal Coating for an amount not to exceed $351,674.77. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, V3 has verified Abbey Paving and Seal Coating's references and feels confident that they will do a good job for the $351,000 we're going to pay them to do the concrete work. And so I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 15-98-R.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of Resolution 15-98-R. Any discussion? Kirk Calderol?
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Bottermann?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Resolution 15-98-R is approved, 13 yes, no-nos, 1 absent. Moving to item number 13, which is Resolution 15-99-R, awarding asphalt contract related to Houston Street Improvement Project to Geneva Construction Company for an amount not to exceed $231,664.40. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, Geneva Construction, working right now on 31, has had their references verified by Geneva, or by V3, and they came in at a low bid, so I would make the motion that we approve Resolution 15-99-R.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Brown for the approval of Resolution 15-99-R. Any discussion? Kirk Calderol?
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Bottermann?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Resolution 15-100-R is approved, 13 yes, no-nos, 1 absent. Okay, moving to item number 15, which is Resolution 15-101-R, awarding landscape contract related to Houston Street Improvement Project to Breezy Hill Nursery for an amount not to exceed $173,961. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, V3 has verified Abbey Paving and Seal Coating's references and feels confident that they will do a good job for the $351,000 we're going to pay them to do the concrete work. And so I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 15-98-R.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of Resolution 15-98-R. Any discussion? Kirk Calderol?
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Bottermann?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Resolution 15-98-R is approved, 13 yes, no-nos, 1 absent. Moving to item number 13, which is Resolution 15-99-R, awarding asphalt contract related to Houston Street Improvement Project to Geneva Construction Company for an amount not to exceed $231,664.40. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, Geneva Construction, working right now on 31, has had their references verified by Geneva, or by V3, and they came in at a low bid, so I would make the motion that we approve Resolution 15-99-R.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Brown for the approval of Resolution 15-99-R. Any discussion? Kirk Calderol?
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Bottermann?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Resolution 15-99-R is approved, 13 yes, no-nos, 1 absent. Okay, moving to 17, the Administrator's Report. Mr. McGrath?
Thanks, Mayor. I wanted to let everybody know, the staff also is very pleased with the way the bids came out for Houston Street and also let you know that staff is already working on some alternative parking arrangements because of the loss of parking for Houston Street. We're also working to make sure and have insisted to the contractors that access to City Hall, River Rain, Waterford on the Fox, Quarry Stone, the businesses on the hill in Houston Street will have unfettered access during this project, so nobody needs to worry about that, particularly if you're coming down for Art in Your Eye or any of the Park District concerts. You may have to come down to a corner to walk across the street, but it will be convenient and safe for you to come to this part of town in the River Walk. I want to remind everybody, because it's been raining so well, everything is growing like crazy and so a lot of people are having some yard waste to contend with. You can just simply put that in the craft paper bags and put one of our stickers on it and put it out at your normal garbage day. For brush, this week is the West Side Pickup. If you had your brush out by this morning at 7:00, but by the end of the week it isn't picked up, please call Public Works by the end of the week or it may be there until the next pickup. The next pickup for the West Side is August 17th, the week of September 21st, the week of October 19th, and then weather permitting, a citywide pickup on November 30th. The East Side was picked up last week. Its next pickup will be August 10th, followed by the week of September 14th, the week of October 12th, and then again, November 30th, the citywide pickup. The Northeast Quadrant is the focus of code compliance this summer. They've gone and done a lot of examining the condition of some of our buildings and driveways, et cetera, and there's dozens of letters out to some of our residents. And it's very important to understand that some of the reasons we do this are, number one, we have a lot of people in that part of town, we're going to go quadrant by quadrant, but we have people putting a lot of money and sweat equity into their homes and we need to insist that they're putting their money into an area which is kept up. Secondly, all of our houses are valuable to us and the housing stock in the Northeast Quadrant is no different and we just have to protect that, our housing stock. Some of the homes in the Northeast Quadrant are terrific architecturally and we need to keep that up so we don't get into a position where we see some of these wonderful places being torn down. So those will, and of course, our goal is always compliance, not punishment or anything, and code compliance will be working with people to see that we can work some things out equitably, but if we don't, if we can't get the right kind of cooperation, we do have, you know, the adjudication system available to us. I wanted to mention that Ezra Segal was mentioned earlier as the artist of the poster for Art in Your Eye this year. And I just, I happen to know Ezra and it's very interesting, you know, we have some artists that are connected with Water Street Studios and other artists who a lot of people seem to know, but we have a number of artists who just work out of their homes, they're not really associated with an organization or not, but in fact are very well-known and Ezra is one of them. And there'll be other samples of his art here during Art in Your Eye, but Ezra shows not only in, you know, Chicago and Chicagoland, but in Florida and has quite actually artistic heritage that he comes from. So I think that we should know, we have a lot of secrets in our town that people don't know about and it's terrific to see some of them. Lastly, or hear about them, lastly, the pedestrian crossings. We've been getting a lot of calls and comments about when will the crossings be activated and as we said last meeting, we can't do, we can't activate them until the crosswalks are striped. We can't do the striping of the crosswalks until the state paving contract of Route 31 is done. And I think there's been, it's a big project, it's been delayed due to the weather. Frankly, I wasn't out there today. I don't know whether they've gotten back to that work, but as soon as that's done, you'll see the crosswalks going in and then everything will be lit up for its use. So I know it's frustrating seeing those poles sitting there covered with black plastic, but that's the situation we're in at the moment. That's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions of the administrators evening?
With the code enforcement, what streets, what are the...
The whole Northeast Quadrant.
What wards?
That's 4th Ward and 5th Ward, I believe.
Okay. Are you going to let the aldermen know that this letter's going out?
I'm certain.
Okay.
But I'll make sure.
Alderman Brown?
Just one quick question, Bill. With the passage of Houston Street tonight, what is the schedule for that? When is it going to start? So the public knows.
Scott, is it 1st of August?
What's the question?
That when construction's actually going to be starting on Houston Street?
I anticipate, I would look for next week to be just kind of mobilization, get in town, start working on all the traffic control and getting all that type of stuff, get all equipment started to move in town. I believe, I don't believe we'll really see too much more than that happen next week, but the following, we should start seeing some real action.
We already have an agreement. We're leasing some space on South Shumway from the old Foundry site to, for our mobilization site and to put all of our excavation spoils temporarily, so I think we're organized at this end for them to start.
Other questions? Thank you. Okay, Committee reports, Community Development, Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tomorrow night's Committee of the Whole meeting is scheduled for 7:30. We have nothing for CDC on that agenda. The Plan Commission's schedule for Wednesday, July 22nd, has been canceled. Historic Preservation for July 27th at 5:30 is scheduled. And then the next Cal meeting on July 28th, we've got quite a lot for the Community Development. We've got sale, a discussion on sale of city property, the sign variance for the sign on Wilson's, I mean, on the library entrance going in off of Wilson Street there at Water Street. And then we've got discussion on the mixed use that we had at the last Cal meeting, but due to the hour, we kind of cut that discussion very short and I asked that maybe everybody take some time and really put some thought into it and contact staff if they have some questions as to what some of those issues or what some of those uses could be or could not be, so we could have some real good discussion when it comes back to committee.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Resolution 15-102-R is approved, 13 yes, no no's, one absent. Okay, moving to item number 15, which is Resolution 15-101-R, awarding landscape contract related to Houston Street Improvement Project to Breezy Hill Nursery, for an amount not to exceed $173,961.17. Alderman Wolf.
Thank you, your honor. Tomorrow night's Committee of the Whole Meeting, we have truck equipment and the 2015 Street Program.
Okay.
Always a fun discussion.
Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, your honor. On July 28th, we have a meeting at the Cal for a well repair contract. I guess we all got notified by John Dillon that well number nine went down to an electrical failure, so that's probably what we'll be discussing.
All right. Any other questions on committee reports? Okay, going to other business. Alderman Mueller, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but do you wanna make any opening comments on your arrival on the City Council or anything?
Not really.
Okay, all right. We have other business from the City Council? Okay, going to 20, the mayor's report. I think all of you may have gotten a postcard from Fermi Lab inviting you there on August 10th at 6:30 for a little open house that they're gonna have. They'd like to have as many of us as possible come, so if you don't know that, let me know, and I'll get you the invitation, because they did send out invitations and wanted to invite as many of us from the City Councils can be there. They were gonna give a little program about what their bigger plans are for some of the stuff that they talked about here recently, so I know some of you that live near, or wards are near there, you may wanna be there. It's Thursday night, August 10th at 6:30, in their atrium out there, so I wanted to make sure everybody knew about that. Bill touched on the code enforcement that's going on, and we've had some folks, I've had several calls from folks who have raised the issue with me, that, and I think this is all well-intentioned, but we got some folks in town that are, decided to plant things on the city parkway, and grow things, specifically right at the intersection of street corners, on the city side of the sidewalk. And we've got a couple of these that are now grown to such proportions, thanks to all the rain, that we are, I think, serving notice on some of these folks who may have good-naturedly gone out and planted this stuff, that they're gonna have to cut it, because they're causing some traffic issues, as it applies to people being able to pull up the stop signs and see around what's coming at them down the street. So, if some of you get questions from residents of your ward about getting a comment or a call from the city, Rhonda Kletz, our enforcement officer, is the one that's handling it. She and I have talked on several occasions the last couple of weeks here of different, she's gotten them, and I've gotten them upstairs, of people that wanted to have certain areas cut down, and most of it is right on the corner of where two sidewalks converge, and there's a grassy area, and people have gone out, and I think, well-intentioned, planted things there, and unfortunately, with all the rain, some of the stuff is growing up, so it's five and six feet tall, and you can't kinda see around it, and it's causing a little bit of a problem. So, that's one of the issues that we have been dealing with here on the code enforcement situation. The other thing, Rhonda and I went out the other day, and we rode basically the business districts, both on Randall Road and downtown, and we found some thistles and some other stuff that was popping out of the ground, that people were not taking care of, so I know she was walking around, or contacting various businesses in town, and asking them